So I will call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd of 2025. And Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So we have City Council from May 20th, Lake Mills Housing Authority from March 25th, and the Plan Commission from April 22nd. Are there any corrections or comments on this set of minutes? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll accept all of those into our records. So next item is correspondence. Greg Koots, would you like to start us out this evening?
I received several emails pertaining to the Sandy Beach redevelopment and the Mobile Home Park.
Great, thank you. Mary?
I did as well, and I also had correspondence on the Rock Lake water levels.
Okay, super. Greg Waters?
Yeah, I was very excited to get seven Sandy Beach responses, so it's nice to hear the community's feedback on that.
Great. Michelle, anything else?
Yep, the only one I have to add is I have an email about library expansion.
Okay, great. I also got multiple emails, both from city residents and Mobile Home Park residents on Sandy Beach Park. Also had a chance to meet and talk with several of my neighbors about it, get their input, and then the regular newsletters from Rock Lake Improvement Association Library and Club 55. So I think that's it for correspondence. Our next item then is public comment. So the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign and sheet provided. If there's anyone attending online that wishes to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature, so then the clerk can identify you. Okay, so I know we have a number of people signed up, so please come onto the podium and give us your name and address, and then your comments.
Hi, my name is JB Clark. I'm a resident of Milton Street. My neighbors and I are here tonight to urge the city council to please reconsider including speed humps in the reconstruction project on Milton Street that is set to start this summer. We understand that the most recent traffic study did not indicate a need for speed humps based on speed-based warrants. We are here tonight to make clear to you the traffic hazards that are not reflected in those metrics. My neighbors will cover those hazards in detail. What I want to focus on is helping you understand the community in question here. Fifty-six percent of the households on Milton Street include children or grandchildren under the age of 12. Twenty-eight percent include seniors over the age of 65. So this means that over 80% of the households on Milton Street include vulnerable road users as defined by various national-level organizations that issue community guidelines for city planning with pedestrian safety in mind. Every single household on Milton Street supports this request. We are coming to you with one voice urging you to please find a meaningful and permanent solution to the hazards that we are here to make clear to you tonight. We are proposing, we are asking that the city council please adopt a residential safety exception clause to allow the inclusion of speed humps in this reconstruction project without the need to meet these speed-based engineering warrants that do not adequately reflect the nature of the hazards that we are here to make clear to you tonight. And I'd like to close by explaining that we are not asking the city to spend millions of dollars to make our streets safe. In fact, we are urging you to please do the opposite of that. Please see if you can find a few thousand dollars to redress this issue now before a reckless driver strikes and kills someone on our street due to these traffic hazards that we are here to explain. We do not wish to see a multimillion-dollar settlement against our city because we failed to redress, we failed to redress these hazards in advance of them happening. We we love our neighbors and we love our city. We really do not wish to see someone killed before our city is forced to pay millions and then still spend money to redress these hazards. Please read the letter that I've given to you, and please listen to my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And please hold applause. We don't do applauses or booing during public comment, but we welcome every perspective. So would someone else like to come up and speak then?
Good evening. My name is Joanne Stout, and I live at 123 Milton Street. I am here this evening to present to you things that have happened on my street that I have seen and what I have experienced. I have been a resident, a homeowner on Milton Street for over 50 years plus. Now, this situation has always been a problem, speeding up Milton Street. I have seen the severity of this situation increase. Yes, there are more students and there are more drivers, which is okay, but they have to follow rules and regulations before a severe accident occurs and/or there is a fatal accident, as my neighbor here just explained. They speed across Main Street, and then as they get onto Milton Street, sometimes they're racing up side by side. I've seen this. They zigzag, or they do sort of a weaving job, or one zig this way, one zig that way. And I was absolutely in shock when I saw this. No, this is not something that is permissible, and this is something that the people here have to understand what is happening on our street. This is serious and needs to be addressed. Now, we are here tonight to present an ongoing situation before there is a serious fatal accident. No one wants this to happen. Now, Milton Street has concerned, loving, and caring parents who are concerned about safety of their children. And in front or inside of their homes, are their children going to be safe to play even though they're far enough away from the street? And at certain times of the day, riding their bikes or their tricycles down the sidewalk is impossible. What if this car comes up and goes off the street and hits one of our darling lovely children, and we just hope it never happens? There were relatives at my home one day that were visiting, and they asked, "Do the kids always race up your street and drive like this?" Okay. I even got hit one morning as I pulled out of my driveway and I was waiting down at the end of Milton Street to get onto Main Street. As I'm waiting there and traffic is coming and passing, I have to wait, bang, I get hit in the rear end. The fortunate thing about that situation is that that morning I had put on, really buckled up my seatbelt. I didn't like using them at first, and that probably saved me from being injured. Yes, it was a high school student boy, I'll just say high school student, and he said his brakes failed. Okay, so is a new surface street going to increase our concerns? Are the people, the kids going to start to decide to race up it more?
Ms. Stout, that's three minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
Okay, so let's take a positive attitude and to act together and rectify this situation. Let's be safe, not sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Hi, my name's Abby Pavone, and I'm at 136 Milton Street. My family and I moved to Milton Street just last year in 2024. Being the newest members on the street, I have to say my husband and I have been really surprised at the level of traffic from the surrounding high schools, both from vehicles and buses, and the super-high speeds we've observed. This has made it so we definitely don't feel safe currently allowing our young children or our dog to play in the front yard of our home or on the sidewalks, especially during morning, lunchtime, and afternoon, like, high school commute times. I've been told by my neighbors that many of the Milton Street residents have reached out to the school administrators multiple times throughout the years about the issues with the unsafe driving on our street, and we appreciate that they've communicated with the student body and bus drivers. I'm a special ed teacher. I previously taught high school in Madison. And just from a neurodevelopmental standpoint, as many of us know, high schoolers are still developing those skills in areas of impulsivity and responsible decision-making. So we feel like something more tangible is needed here to solve the problem and ensure safety for all. Multiple Milton Street residents received an email from the city manager, Drake Daly, addressing a request for something to be done about this problem. He gave us information about a speed study done and then informed us that we're to request city council to take further action, which is why most of us are here today. His email said that the traffic calming measures weren't included in the bid for our street because the Police Department's Speed Surveillance Board didn't show that the Federal Highway Administration's recommended threshold for implementing speed bumps had been met. And while we appreciate that that speed study was done, we do see multiple problems with the speed study. Number one, it was only a 10-day snapshot. It was done last spring in 2024, and it was not representative of decades of issues on Milton Street. Number two, using a 24-hour window, we feel skews the data. A snapshot of rush hours, morning lunch hour, school dismissal would show a very different percentage of speeding cars. Number three, the speed study also did not capture the very nature of the problem, we feel, which is largely rapid acceleration as high schoolers shoot across Main Street, roll through stop signs, failure to stop, passing on a residential street, tailgating, and overall just very unsafe driving behaviors. Number four, although the speed trailer might have clocked drivers going 25 miles an hour or under, that was placed at the middle of the street, and again, we feel like the rapid acceleration on either side of the street is the main issue. And five, it's important to note that the Federal Highway Administration's guidelines are just guidelines, not requirements, and they're guidelines to be considered, but don't prohibit cities from installing common sense measures to meet the unique needs of specific areas. I hope you can see we're just an active group of neighbors that believe in the power of our city council to represent our concerns. And first and foremost, we really care about the safety of our children and our neighbors, and I would hate to see a devastating accident occur due to a repeated pattern of neglect and dismissal of citizens' concerns over the years. So thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. Right at three minutes. Thank you very much.
She practiced.
She must have, yeah. Must have practiced. So anyone else who would like to speak during public comment this evening?
Hi there. My name is Heather Boss. I live at 128 Milton Street. I'm asking for the city council's help with a solution for the safety of our street and our families. My husband and I moved to Milton Street in 2008, long before we were married or started our family. Neither of us were from Lake Mills, but we were looking for our first home in a safe and quiet community within commuting distance to Madison and Milwaukee. I fell in love with our little house because of its character and charm, and Robbie soon surrendered. We love our shady lot and the tree-lined street. We were happy to hear the steps the city is making toward the tree protection and are excited that Milton Street is part of the pilot program to implement these changes. We believe the voices of the residents were heard regarding this matter and our desire to maintain the beauty of our street and the city we all love. We hope to have the same collaboration regarding the safety issues on our street. We have made efforts that trace back many years asking for help with these concerns. I personally have had contact with Mr. Waters, the principals of both the schools, and the police chief on multiple occasions. I understand that what they said, I understand what they said and the limitations they have. We are left with studies and conversations that led to no solutions. The data that has been gathered is not accurate or a complete picture of the issues. All we have been told is what we can't do and why it won't work. We can't help but feel dismissed and unheard and purposely left out of important conversations related to this particular project. We've been trying to work with the city to bring a solution up in time to include in the reconstruction project instead of bringing it up after the work is done. Drake said the street won't be redone for another 70 years or so. We are asking for the city's council's help with a solution for the safety of our street and our families. Years ago, my husband's truck was sideswiped while parked in front of our house. Residents can recall cars racing side by side down our street after leaving the high school. Other cars have been seen weaving in and out of parked cars very dangerously and even passing other cars. This is not a new concern. This goes back years and years. It's not necessarily always a matter of speed in excess of 25 miles per hour, but a rapid acceleration, incomplete stops, and so on. Excess speed is not the only indication of dangerous driving. Things I have personally asked as far back as 2021 were speed bumps, a lower speed limit, increased police presence during the three most concerning times of the day, a change in traffic pattern, and/or a change in street access during certain times and/or days. I work in the heart of Madison in an area on the edge of a residential community with a school. The busy Main Street leading to the residential area has pedestrian push buttons and electronic speed signs, just as we have on Main Street. The residential streets have speed humps. These humps calm the traffic as intended. No solution would solve 100% of this problem, but doing nothing solves zero.
That's three minutes. If you could wrap up, please. Oh, she's done. Wow.
Hello, my name is Ben Clark, and I live at 122 Milton Street. And my, and yes, my dad is JB Clark. So I think that we should have speed bumps on our street. Why? Well, here are three reasons why I think this. Number one, kids and pets are playing, and we should make sure that it's safe for them. If people slow down, it makes the street safer for us. Two, the signs that say kids and pets at play didn't make them slow down, not a single bit. Speed bumps would make it more likely that people would slow down and keep our community safe. And finally, number three, I really, really love our neighbors and want to see them be safe. There are so many kids, and it's scary when cars go so fast, and that's why we should have speed bumps.
Thank you. Nice job, Ben. Speaker. Nice job.
Good evening, Lake Mills City Council. I am Shannon Gaynor, speaking on behalf of Tommy Gosman. We both are at 603 South Main Street. Here is what Tommy had to say. I am writing as a concerned resident of Milton Street, located directly across from Lake Mills High School, to urgently request the installation of speed bumps or similar traffic calming measures in this area. Every school day, particularly before and after classes, Milton Street experiences a surge in traffic, much of it from student drivers. Many vehicles travel at excessive speeds despite the residential setting and the high concentration of young pedestrians. Our children walk, bike, and play along the street, and it is only a matter of time before a serious accident occurs if no action is taken. This concern is not just hypothetical. In a case in New York, Torturo versus the City of New York in 2016, a court found a municipality liable after a resident was seriously injured in a traffic accident. The court held the city responsible because residents had previously warned officials about excessive speeding on that roadway, and the city failed to take preventative action. In this lawsuit, Torturo was awarded $20 million in damages, and the city was found 40% responsible for the crash. The sum of all the measures that could be taken would be less than the cost of a lawsuit against Lake Mills. I, like many others on Milton Street, have young children and are just trying to avoid a tragic accident. I've already witnessed a traumatic accident on Milton Street a few years ago with my own two eyes, and I sure don't want to witness another one. Thank you for your attention to this urgent safety issue and for your continued service to the city of Lake Mills. And on a personal note from myself, as someone who is still relatively new to Lake Mills, I want to express how incredibly grateful I am to have found a home on Milton. Moving there has been one of my greatest blessings. It's more than just a place to live. It's a community within a community. Milton Street is filled with people who genuinely care for one another, not just as neighbors, but as friends and extended family. You'd be hard-pressed to find a more thoughtful, tight-knit group, or the kind of neighborhood where people still borrow a cup of sugar, where our kids play together in the yards, we share meals, host block parties, and most importantly, we watch out for one another. The impact of a tragic accident on Milton Street would shake each one of us to our core. The sense of connection is something we are proud of and something we deeply want to preserve. But to do that, safety has to remain a priority, and we are hopeful that with your support, we can take the steps necessary to make that happen. Thank you so much for your time and for your commitment to the well-being of Lake Mills.
Thank you. Well, I think, is there anybody else who wants to speak? Well, the next person is coming up. I'll just make sure that people are aware, this item is not on our agenda tonight, so we won't be able to have any discussion or make any decisions as a council tonight. So just wanted to make sure that, to set people's expectations for that. So, okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Clement. I live at 116 Milton. Sorry, Shannon got to me. I just wanted to start by thanking the city council for the efforts they've made with the tree protection plan and for working with the residents of Lake Mills and with the Tree Protection Committee to put those changes in place. And that's why I think it was, we were so surprised last week at the informational meeting about the street reconstruction project to learn that we were told it was too late to include speed bumps in the reconstruction project, because the bid had already been approved and voted on, and that including speed bumps at this point would require the additional expense of having the project rebid. It was suggested at that meeting that residents hadn't raised these concerns in time to be included in the bid for the project. This line of reasoning is frankly frustrating to us because our concerns were raised well before the bid was completed, and we followed up multiple times asking to be included in the conversation so that our concerns could be included in the project planning. These issues were specifically brought up at the November informational meeting about the street project. Residents were told at that time that they would be notified about the discussion and would have an opportunity to talk with city council about the speeding issues and possible solutions. I personally spoke with Mr. Myrum over the phone in February and asked when we might be able to talk with the city council and how we could be sure that we would be included in the conversation. I know my neighbor Diane Allward, also of Milton Street, also called and spoke with our city attorney, Mr. Drescher, in February, and she asked about these same issues and expressed that we would like to speak with the city council. We were both told at that time that it was too early to have those discussions. Mr. Myrum told me that he would look into who to talk to about it and would get back to us. I was assured that there would be a meeting with residents in the future where we could discuss our concerns with the city and that we would all be notified of the meeting ahead of time. We weren't notified of any meetings or discussions until the information session that was held last week, where we were told it was now too late. During the speed study conducted by the Police Department in 2024, two drivers were clocked going 40 miles per hour or higher, which is an extremely high and unsafe rate of speed on a street like Milton Street. Even one instance of this type of reckless speeding poses a significant risk to the children and other vulnerable individuals on our street. A speed bump or speed hump is the most effective way to prohibit young, impulsive drivers from driving with such recklessness. If there truly is no way to set aside additional funds for the inclusion of speed bumps in the reconstruction project, we suggest the installation of movable speed humps. These can cost as low as $85 to $100 and can be easily added at any time to a street and don't need to be included specifically in a reconstruction project. Speed humps do allow snowplows to plow over them, which eliminates the concerns that had been expressed in the past about damage to the roads from snowplows going over them or snowplow drivers not being willing to deal with the speed bumps.
That is three minutes. If you could wrap up?
Yes. They also could simply be removed during the winter months, which would at least ensure increased safety on our street for 75% of the year. We're just asking for reasonable measures for the city to work with us to find a solution that works for everyone and keeps not just our own residents of Milton Street safe, but also all of those residents who are driving on Milton Street every day. Thank you very much.
I missed your name. Could you restate that real quick?
Sarah Clement.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Erin Clark, and I live at 122 Milton Street. Our family moved to Lake Mills about seven and a half years ago, and we instantly fell in love with the town being drawn to the small town and safe community. Imagine our surprise when we learned that we actually lived basically on a racetrack. The reckless driving is very alarming to us. Our neighborhood has repeatedly reached out to the police, schools, and town officials to work together to resolve the issue of unsafe driving on Milton Street. Unfortunately, despite all the discussion and observations, real change has not occurred. When we learned our street would be redone this summer, we were excited for the opportunity to work together with the city to make a significant improvement. Our neighbors turned out in force at the first public meeting regarding the project. When we brought up the concern and hope of including speed bumps or speed humps in the project, we were told we would be notified of the appropriate time to speak up. Multiple individuals reached out to contact the city on multiple occasions, asking when that meeting would be, what would that appropriate time be, and the answer was repeatedly, "It's too early. We'll let you know." Upon being informed of the project meeting on May 28th last week, we were looking forward to a meaningful discussion. You can imagine our frustration when we were told it was too late to discuss the issue, that the project had already been designed. Every other time we asked, it was too early, and suddenly, it was too late. We have filed the recommendations that the city set forth only to be shut down. 100% of the residents on our street are in favor of including speed humps or speed bumps. 100%. That speaks volumes to the severity of the problem. What other issues have gotten 100% agreement? If it takes our neighborhood showing up at each council meeting from now until the issue is resolved, we can do that. We'll be here on the first and third Tuesday of every month to say hi. We believe the measures taken by us to address the issue include speaking with the city police, the administrators of the high schools, both Lakeside and Lake Mills, and we haven't seen any change. We're aware that all the school areas in the community are a place of high safety risk, and we feel that by adding speed bumps on Milton Street, it frees up the resources for the police and other enforcements to be at the elementary school and middle school, freeing up resources. This is a known issue for many, many years. The time to do something is now, and we respectfully ask you to take action now. We ask you, if it were your kids, what would, what would you like to see done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Charlie Pinney. I live at 161 Milton Street. There probably is very little I can add to what my neighbors have said. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and I think it's a legitimate concern because this is a special situation, the outlet of Lake Mills High School goes right onto Milton Street. I have a letter from my next-door neighbor, Lindsay Probst, who could not be here tonight. I will submit it to you, and I want to thank the council for letting us all speak tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And I will note that some of the residents did bring other letters from others who couldn't attend, and that those have been distributed to the council, so we do have those other, that other correspondence as well. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Is there anyone online, Misty?
Nobody's registered online.
Okay, any other public comment on any topic? Okay, thank you. If not, we will close public comment for this evening. And again, because this item is not on our agenda, we will not be able to discuss it. But I thank everybody for your attendance and for the correspondence that you've shared as well. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Drake?
There's a number of items included on there. If there's any questions, please let me know. I did receive a further update from the DNR. Their goal is a preliminary decision on the city's water level order request in sometime in the middle of June. So we will keep an eye out for that. Otherwise, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for the city manager?
I have one. I'm curious to know a little bit more about why the simplified rate case was denied.
So when you, when we submitted the final application, one of the criteria is a, you can't earn over a certain rate of return in the utility. That rate of return was 6.4%. Our current rate of return is 6.51%. So at their final review of the application and of our annual PSC report, they determined that we were 0.11% too high to be eligible for the simplified rate case.
So we didn't know that before it was submitted? That's, I was just curious. So that's something that we wouldn't have known, that we were over the threshold? Or is that something we learned?
John, could you help me out?
That's why I just called you by surprise. If we would have known, then would we have done something different? I was just trying to understand how that works.
Cameron from our consulting.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. John Cameron with Ellers. The short answer is no. At the time you were looking at applying, your 2024 PSC annual report was not yet completed, so the PSC will always go off of that latest annual report for determining eligibility. So based on 2023, you were eligible. Once you filed your 2024 annual report, your net operating income was just a little bit too high, which generated a rate of return that was higher than benchmark. So I think the bottom line is, you know, it's good to keep monitoring it year in and year out and, you know, bringing it forward at the point in which you file your annual report. If you're eligible, you know, move forward then.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for Drake? I just had, I guess, more of a request, so we have the residential market analysis for Jefferson County and it touches on some issues related to the housing needs in the county overall, and some of them are very similar to issues that the Plan Commission has been starting to work on with respect to possible zoning changes or other things to address, missing middle and other things like that. So I guess just a request to share that analysis with the Plan Commission so that they can be familiar with what's going on in the county in case they want to, you know, discuss that further. And Greg, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
I just noticed as I was reading through the report that it correlated a lot with what was in our comprehensive plan. There was a lot of correlation there, so a lot of similar data, which reinforces each other, I guess. So it was interesting to see that.
Yeah.
But I do know that the Planning Commission, some of the members have expressed some desire to move forward with some zoning things that they want to have looked at over the next year, so we'll see how that goes.
Great. Anything else on the city manager's report?
Yes, I also noticed you have a comment about recycling grant and what is that going to be put towards?
It goes to offset the John's disposal contract for the curbside recycling program. So it offsets the rates that ultimately residents have to pay in order to cover the cost of the recycling program.
Okay, thanks. Awesome.
And if I remember it, we've been pretty successful in getting that every year, I think.
Nice.
So that's great. Thank you to staff for pursuing that every year.
That's all I had.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to council business. Our first item is a consent agenda item. So we have 10 license items and two board appointments under this. So if any one council member wants to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss separately, you can request that now. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to adopt the full consent agenda.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items 1 through 12.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quidno, and under our procedures, there's no discussion. So Misty, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is an update on the yard waste recycling center project. I think this was a request from our last meeting. So it looks like our Public Works Director, Randy Myrum, is coming up to talk with us. Good evening, Randy.
Hello, council. So this is a picture of the current status of our new yard waste site at the south end of CP Avenue. We are expecting our, the balance of our blocks to be delivered tomorrow. We will, we will be able to functionally open this, we think, within two weeks without the gate or the cameras. Next slide. Dave, next slide, please.
He's working on it.
Okay, sir. There we go. Some of the challenges we have faced was, this is CP Avenue. We do anticipate one day that this will become a municipal road, so we had to build this according to Department of Transportation specifications. We immediately, when we were starting our excavation, hit some very poor soils in this area, very wet materials, so we built a dewatering system and we had to do some undercutting, remove and replace of the poor soils, and then we had to ship in the oversized stone. Now, some of the other challenges we've had are making use of the equipment we have available. Next slide, please, Dave. If we were a commercial contractor, we would have a large grader and a large excavator, but with budget constraints, we, you know, are not able to afford such machines and we typically wouldn't have the use of that. Next slide. So we make use of what we have. We have a Skidster, next, and a mini excavator. And with these and a inexperienced operator, we shot our own grades and did this all on our own. So it has taken some time, but we have, we are nearing completion. Because of some limited funds, I have not been able to purchase cameras yet. Most of the balance of what I have left is going to go towards our gate system with a key fob system and that looks, I'm waiting, unfortunately, I'm on my third revision of a quote. The prices have been going up and I'm expecting that soon, hopefully tomorrow. But I would propose, I would tell the council, this will be functional. I received our new signs today. It is our anticipation to post publicly that we will be moving the location of our site. I will be then blocking off the stony site with three signs, two saying no dumping, one indicating where the new site is. And then at the new site, I have very large signs saying absolutely no contractors and then we'll have some other signs indicating what you can dump here. But this should be operational within two weeks, I would say, max, without the gate. I cannot give you a date on the gate. It is, we are working on it. I would hope that it would be done this summer. I don't see why it wouldn't, but I might have just jinxed myself, so. Are there any questions about this?
In regard to the area that, can we go back a couple of pictures, back to the original picture, if you don't mind?
Next slide.
There you go. Are we, or has, I forget, if it was considered that we are going to maybe put fencing or something around the area so as to prevent people from, I don't know, walking in over?
Yes. Well, this is a very legitimate concern. We are going to create a perimeter. It will not be with fencing. I do not have the funds for that, but I will be creating a perimeter with more block.
Okay.
And it should secure it from other vehicles getting in, but I anticipate one day we'll have a fence around it, a chain link fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Randy, I had a question. Just given the lack of availability of, to be able to purchase cameras right away and some of the other delays that you've, that you've experienced, is there anything that needs to go back to the Public Works Board in terms of setting days of operation or anything like that? Or do you have all the decisions and recommendations that you need from them and it's just a matter of finishing up the implementation?
It's just a matter of finishing up. I should add, I'm sorry, Treasurer Bell helped a great deal in finding some extra funds now for the cameras and we will be able to make that purchase. Just up until last week, I did not have the direct funds for that, but we have secured some funding for the cameras, so those two will be coming, definitely.
Thank you. And I guess another question I have, so the fobs, will those will be available within a couple of weeks or?
No.
And then how will people, how will people get them?
Shouldn't anticipate key fob access with, at the time of opening or time of gate installation.
So that won't be ready right away, is what you're saying? Okay, that'll be down the road a bit. Okay.
And we'll still work out the logistics of how residents will get these fobs. There's going to be a computer program that comes with this and we'll have to decide within staff of how we're going to monitor these, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-33. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-33, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Hawkins Ash CPA.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
Not there yet.
I got you. I've moved to approve City Council Resolution 25-33, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Hawkins Ash CPA.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Quidno, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Staff?
Are there any questions? We have been satisfied with the work completed by Hawkins Ash. We are recommending a one-year renewal. We evaluate this annually to determine if we think an RFP is warranted, so we'll have that opportunity again after completion of the 2025 audit. But in general, we've been satisfied with the services that we've received.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mary?
In lieu of an RFP, do you ever do like a reasonable check, just that the amount that we're paying is reasonable compared to what others with doing the same services would also be paying? In lieu of an RFP, just more of a competitive check, do we do that along the way?
Yeah, we're generally aware of what other municipalities are paying for similar services. This hasn't tripped any alarm bells as to being out of line in that regard. I anticipate we will do an RFP in the, in the future, within the next several years if it be, when it becomes necessary, especially as, you know, this year we'll be working with a new head auditor and so we'll evaluate our services, you know, following completion of this one and determine if we would like to see if there's a better option out there for us, but Hawkins Ash has always been competitive on pricing for us, so we are, we're comfortable with the pricing that they've submitted.
Thanks. I think maybe you've answered a question that I have, but I guess I'll ask it anyway. I was wondering if there would, if we would have ever considered doing a multi-year renewal and if we would get any, you know, kind of a better rate for that? I know we've done that with some other contracts that we have, but I think maybe you're saying that because of maybe some of the change in personnel, we'd like to just go year by year for a little while here.
A three-year option was offered. It was only a savings of, I think, $1,500 or so.
Okay.
So we would, we would like to see how the, this year goes prior to entering into a longer term agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote placed on Resolution 25-33, which is authorizing audit services for 2025?
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-34. Misty, would you read that, please?
City Council Resolution 25-34, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $2,815,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A.
Okay, we have our financial advisor, John Cameron, from Ellers here this evening, so why don't we go ahead and have him give the overview before we take a motion on this item? Welcome, John. Welcome back.
Good evening, everybody. I'll walk through the pre-sale report that's included in your packet, gives you highlights of the.
Excuse me, I think the microphone might be off.
Oh. Is there a green light on there, John?
Now it is.
Okay.
Yep. There we go. Sorry about that. I'll give you an overview of the financing through the pre-sale report so that you have a good understanding of the resolution that you're taking up this evening. So this is for the issuance of not to exceed $2,815,000 general obligation promissory notes. This is for the city's 2025 capital improvement projects that are supported through the general fund as well as through special assessment revenues, including fire, parks, police, special assessment projects, and then street improvement projects. These are projects that have been identified in your budget as items that are going to be borrowed for through the issuance of general obligation debt. In terms of the authority, the statutory authority is general obligation promissory notes under Wisconsin state statutes. It does fall under the city's total general obligation borrowing capacity. All municipalities in the state of Wisconsin have a finite amount of borrowing capacity and that is no more than 5% of your total equalized value. After the issuance of these notes, the city will be at approximately 46% of its borrowing limit with a little under $27 million of remaining general obligation borrowing capacity. The term of the debt is being issued for 20 years. Principal on the notes will start next year, May 1 of 2026, and run out through 2045, and then you will have a semi-annual interest payment starting May 1, 2026. So it'll be May 1, November 1 for interest payments. There will be a call feature, a prepayment ability on the notes, so it'll allow you to either pay the notes early, provided you have the cash to do so, or refinance the notes for interest rate savings if the interest rates at that time are lower than the interest rates at the time of the sale of the notes. The call feature will begin May 1, 2034, or any date thereafter. And as part of our services, we are always monitoring refunding opportunities and presenting those when warranted to the city. As part of this issue, we will be going through a rating process with Standard and Poor's. The city currently has a AA- rating, which is a very high credit rating with Standard and Poor's, which is one of the two major rating agencies in the United States. That call will be happening next week. In terms of the method of sale, as is past practice with the city, this will be done through a competitive offering. I'll talk about timeline here in a second, but for projects like these that are routine capital projects, given the credit rating of the city and the fact that these are not story-type projects where we'd want to get a specific underwriter on board and explain the nature of the financing, the competitive offering process has worked very well for the city in the past. We anticipate it to be the same this time around. From a timing standpoint, we'll be looking at conducting the sale on June 26 with an estimated closing date or date that funds would be available July 17. The resolution that you have before you this evening is to conduct the sale through what's called a parameter sale. And really what it does, and it's quite common this time of year because there's a lot of municipalities that are going out for, to market. Most municipalities in the state of Wisconsin meet Mondays and Tuesday nights, so most bond sales or note sales in the state of Wisconsin happen on Mondays and Tuesdays. So if we can move to an alternate date where we know there's not as much competition in the market, we'll do that or at least bring it forward for recommendation. Not that you don't want to see my smiley face twice through the debt issuance process, but it allows you to do that on an off-meeting night. The other reason for doing it is it keeps you on target for receiving funds by the middle of July so that you're ready to go with funds on hand for the project. So the resolution from a highlight standpoint really establishes maximum parameters that you're dictating to us as your municipal advisor in which you would allow the sale to occur. So the highlights of it is a not to exceed issuance size of $2,815,000 with a minimum and maximum bids that the underwriter can bid on. and fifteen thousand with a minimum and maximum bids that the underwriter can bid on. That does not affect the amount of money that you will have available for your capital improvement projects. It just reflects the minimum and maximum that they can bid, that they can make, or price that they will pay for the bonds. Most bonds and most bonds for the city have been issued at a premium, meaning that they're depositing additional dollars in exchange for slightly higher interest rates, and we're able to put those dollars to work to help pay interest expense in the first, up to the first three years of the issuance of the notes. We're also able to cover some of the cost of issuance expenses with those dollars. So their premium price is evaluated in that overall true interest cost of the notes. So not to exceed price, a minimum and maximum, and then a true interest, a maximum, true interest cost of 5%. So that, those are the parameters that we'd be working with, provided you adopt the resolution this evening, as well as just allowing some maturity fluctuation on the day of sale, no more than $75,000 per maturity. So just to give you kind of a rundown on the day of sale, we'll have a prescribed bid time. Generally, it'll be about 10 o'clock in the morning. At that time, or up to that point in time, underwriters are allowed to submit their bids through an electronic parity system. We'll evaluate those bids shortly after the sale time to determine who the winning bidder is. They're bidding on two things, really. They're bidding on the price of the notes, and then they're bidding on, they're putting an interest rate for each maturity. Those are all evaluated in total to determine that true interest cost and who the winning underwriter is. So those interest rates, even though you might have a different interest rate for each maturity, those are locked for that 20-year period of time on the day of sale. Then it designates city staff to be able to sign off on the bonds or the notes, in this case, provided the, the terms are met. Beyond that, in the packet, there's a number of schedules that show the total sizing, the estimated principal and interest payment schedules based on current rates for an in-kind credit, plus an additional 35 basis points baked into each maturity for potential market movement between now and the end of June when the sale occurs. Generally speaking, the principal and interest payments are relatively level, a little higher upfront just because we've got some smaller capital pieces that we're amateurizing over a shorter period of time. But generally speaking, fairly level principal and interest payments. The other thing to note in the sizing that you may have noticed is when we initially built it, we did look at the possibility of refunding one of the city's outstanding bank notes that has a balloon payment coming up in 2026. But in working with city staff, they determined that they'd pay cash for that item, so it was removed from the financing. Beyond that, the last thing I'll point out is just the very last page that shows a two-year history of where interest rates have been. And you'll notice that on the far right-hand side, over the last month, interest rates have spiked and then come back down pretty considerably, back to more normal levels. And that happened really the first part of April with some of the tariff news and the selling off of U.S. Treasuries. It caused the bond market to go haywire for a period of time. And since that period, we've, we've had a number of successful sales, and the interest rate environment has really stabilized quite nicely. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cameron this evening? I'm not seeing anybody being inquisitive. I've got a couple, or actually, I guess maybe one is a, maybe there are more comments? Slash question. So this parameters process, that seems to have a couple of clear advantages, and I don't recall in my time on the council from some of our previous borrowing doing that. And as you commented, it's, it seems like it gives you the advantage of going to sale on different days of the week.
It does.
And also, it allows us to delegate staff the ability to approve the sales rather than you having to come to a council meeting, you know, day of sale and, and all of that. So I guess those are my comments. And so my question is, why don't we do the parameters process all the time?
You certainly, you know, you certainly can. You're, you're an annual issuer, so doing it as long as you're comfortable getting the sale results after the fact is, is doable. I will say in the past, you know, if there was an issue with the number of sales that are, were happening in that particular day, we would have brought it forward. It just so happened that historically, you've, you know, been in an environment where there were, you know, relatively few sales that day, which allowed, allowed things to move forward on normal meeting nights. So going forward, you're not going to hurt my feelings if, you know, we cut one meeting out of the process and it allows staff to sign off on it. The nice thing, just given, you know, the, the market movement, for example, that happened in April, it allowed for those municipalities that had parameters resolutions, it allowed us to postpone the sale and come back without, you know, seeking additional council action. The downside to the parameters resolution process for a couple of those is the parameters were set a month or two before that when interest rates were lower. So in some cases, then we had to come back and have them adopt a new parameters resolution at a higher interest rate, reset expectations. Not a bad thing, it just added a little time to the process. So, so there's some give and take, I'd say.
Some pros and cons.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I, like I said, I just, it seems to have some, some good positives, some efficiency, but maybe just every year, you know, it'd be good to evaluate whether that makes sense. I guess the other comment that I wanted to make, and let me find the page here in your pre-sale report, page eight. And I know you use our capital improvement plan to put these numbers together for the five years. For the coming year, or for this year, we have 8,000 in planned borrowing. We're not doing about three, or excuse me, 8 million, not doing about 3 million of that because we're not borrowing for the Sandy Beach restaurant. So that takes it down to closer to five. But then we've got a pretty big jump next year. So I just think, you know, as we have the capital improvement plan coming to us again in the next month or two, we should just look at that because that, that seems to be a bit of a spike in our borrowing. And just want to make sure we're all, you know, looking at that closely and thinking about how that will play out for our debt levy.
Lisa, can you direct me as to where you found that we are not going to be borrowing for Sandy Beach?
Oh, just from a past decision that we made.
Yeah. No, right. Okay.
From last November.
Does show it on the, on the.
Yeah, it shows it as, not from, it was going to be, what does the STF stand for? I forget. State.
State Trust Fund Loan.
State Trust Fund, yeah. So it was going to be borrowing from a different, through a different process. But yeah, since we decided not to move forward with that, it still was on our plan. So, you know, John, you still had it on your report.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Daley? Drake, I, I'm curious how much, given that we've had quite a few people talking tonight about Milton Street, how much of the street's budget for 2025 is meant for Milton Street?
The Milton Street project is about 1.2 million dollars, I think. That's total project. That's, some of that's going to be borne by utilities. So the street-only portion, eight or 900? That's off, that's from memory, though.
So then the other pieces of sewer and water would kind of tie in with that?
Yeah, the utilities will bear the cost of their portion of the borrow. So they'll, they're either borrowed for or they pay the principal and interest portion from the, the note that's taken out.
Okay. And my second question is, there doesn't appear to be anything budgeted for, for library. And I'm wondering how that kind of plays in with our capital improvement?
Well, the library has not asked for funds for 2026.
Gotcha.
Or 2020, for 2025. These, these funds you're borrowing are only for 2025 expenditures.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Did you have a question?
Oh, I saw you put your mic on, so I thought you might have a question. And I was just looking here to see if we had library in a future year.
No.
I don't think we do, but that would be, again, our, we will be updating our capital improvement plan again in a couple of months. I'm sure that, that topic will come up. Okay, is there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Cameron or for staff regarding the pre-sale report for 2025A? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion on Resolution 25-34?
I will move to approve City Council Resolution 25-34, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 2.815 million general obligation promissory notes, series 2025A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Schmaker, seconded by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Misty, would you please call the roll on Resolution 25-34?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmaker?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-35. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 25-35, a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 2,430,000 sewerage system and light and water utility mortgage revenue bonds, series 2025B.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to you, John, again, to go through this pre-sale report, and then we can do a motion.
Sure. So same sort of pre-sale report format for the B issue. So these are utility revenue bonds, so supported by the revenues of the electric sewer and water utility for essential purpose utility projects. So each utility's portion of project cost is anticipated to be supported by the revenues of each of the associated utilities. This debt issue is also being issued for a term of 20 years. Principal will start May 1, 2026, through 2045. Interest will be payable every six months, starting May 1 of 2026. There will also be a call feature starting on 2034 for these bonds as well. Like the A issue, we'll be going through the rating process. We have a rating call scheduled with Standard and Poor's for next week. The rating for the utility is currently at an A minus level, which is fairly standard. Utility ratings generally are one to two notches below where the general fund's rating is, so that's fairly standard. The method of sale, like the A issue, will be through a competitive sale process. We'll be both, doing both sales in tandem as, on the same day at the end of June. The projects themselves lend themselves, lend themselves well to a competitive sale process, just like with the projects that are being funded on the general obligation side. The parameters resolution for this issue is very similar, but a little bit higher, given that these are revenue, utility revenue bonds. So general obligation debt, because it's backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayers of the city, generally carries the most favorable interest rates with revenue bonds being kind of one notch below that. So revenue bonds are supported by the revenues of each of the three utilities. They do come with a debt service reserve requirement, and they generally come with a little bit higher interest rates than what you see for general obligation debt. So for that reason, when we establish the parameters, we're going, again, with a not to exceed issuance size. In this case, it's 2,430,000. Little bit higher bid parameters, just with revenue bonds, we've got a little less restriction on the minimum and maximum size, so just giving the underwriters maximum flexibility on how they bid the debt offering. We've got a maximum true interest cost of not to exceed 5.5%. So a little bit higher than on the A issue. And then allowable maturity adjustments on the day of sale of no more than $40,000 per maturity. From a schedule standpoint, as I said, this will sell the same time, same day and same time as the A issue, and will close on the same date, July 17. Beyond that, happy to answer any questions as it relates to this issue.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cameron regarding the proposed borrowing series 2025B? I guess we, I guess you've covered it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion on Resolution 25-35?
I'll move to approve City Council Resolution 25-35.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmaker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Misty, please call the roll on Resolution 25-35.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmaker?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-36. Misty, would you please read that for us?
City Council Resolution 25-36, conditional use permit declarations and findings, petitioners, Lake Mills Area School District, amendment to conditional use permit for an addition, 155 East Pine Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel number 24607131231000.
Thank you. So again, let's have staff go ahead first before we do a motion. So we have our zoning administrator here tonight. I assume you're going to take the lead, Troy?
Sure. Good evening, council. This conditional use was triggered to keep compliance with our ordinance. The school does have a conditional use now, and I put in red in the memo there so you could see that is our ordinance. Any additions or enlargements, even though they have a legal existing conditional use, it requires them to go through the conditional use process again. So that's pretty much why this is in front of you today. It is for an 80, approximately 8,600 square foot addition on the northeast corner of the property. Staff does recommend approval for this. The consultants have, have looked at this and have, Plan Commission also obviously has, yep, have seen this and recommend approval.
So to be clear, the Planning Commission did approve it?
Great, thank you. And I don't see any representatives from the school district here this evening. Are there any questions for Troy on the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-36, conditional use permit for the school, for the, at, need my glasses. At 155 East Pine Street, Lake Mills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Misty, would you please call the roll on Resolution 25-36?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmaker?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. So our next agenda item is Ordinance 1275. This is the third reading, so Misty, would you please do the third reading for us?
Ordinance 1275, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Section 660-44 Sub A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 24607131231000. Property address, 155 East Pine Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Owners, Lake Mills Area School District.
Thank you. And again, let's have a staff overview before we have a motion on this.
Sure. So as you guys maybe remember, Attorney Drescher had, had mentioned in a previous meeting that we no longer needed the PDD version of this request. The school was granted a variance for the relaxation of this side yard setback from the right of way. So the, the PDD is, I'm assuming you guys will make an amendment to remove the PDD portion from this resolution and just keep the PIO. And just to remind you guys, the PIO really should have been done back in 2013 when the school was, when they approved the school to be put on this property, or I guess rebuilt on this property, and, and the conditional use was done. That, it's appropriate, and our code requires a PIO overlay on these residential districts. So this is kind of a, a staff request, I guess, to continue on with the PIO overlay.
Thank you. So if I understand you right, your, the, the recommendation is to approve the ordinance by striking the language about planned development district because that's not needed.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Are there any questions for staff regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Drescher?
Yes, sir.
So that would be to strike adding a planned development district overlay, PDD?
I think you can leave adding A and then just strike planned development and leaving PIO after that in one.
So it's still be adding the public and institutional overlay, but not the PDD?
Correct. And so it, it did go through the Plan Commission. You've been through three readings of this ordinance. The Plan Commission did recommend adoption of both. It just happens that the hearing regarding the variance was literally days before the Plan Commission hearing. So the school has granted the, the variance. They really don't need both avenues at this point. The PDD is not planned for. We don't have. The PDD is not planned for, we don't have the additional documents that are necessary. It's, it's just not needed to go forward. So strike that and move forward with the public institution overlay.
Should we make a motion and then go back and amend it, then?
That's, yeah, that would be appropriate.
All right.
Are there any other questions? So if not, someone can make a motion on ordinance 1275.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1275.
Are you making the amendment?
I'll make the amendment after.
Let's motion to amend and then motion to approve.
You can do it in your main motion.
Yep.
Okay. Now I have to do all the work?
Motion to amend, striking a planned development district from one.
PDD, from section one.
Correct, leaving public institution overlay.
So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1275, striking, or amending to strike the planned development district overlay, PDD. Does that work?
From section one, correct.
From section one?
Yep.
Section one, thank you.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Is there any further discussion? So if it's amended when it's introduced, we just vote once?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, Misty?
That was a motion to amend and adopt?
It was a motion to adopt with the striking of the PDD.
So to adopt with amendment, okay. So, Misty, would you please call the roll on approving ordinance 1275 as amended?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is ordinance 1276. This is the first reading this evening, so Misty, would you please conduct the first reading?
Ordinance 1276, amended in City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 660-44 sub A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 24607132311017. Property address, 1219 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Owners, Lake Mills Feeding Grain, Inc.
Thank you, so this is just the first reading tonight, but I'd like to have Troy give a brief overview, and we do have representatives from Lake Mills Feeding Grain here tonight, so I'd like to also give them the opportunity to address the council.
Sure.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for acknowledging there are some representatives here. They'll do a better job of painting a picture with what they're looking for. But I would like to acknowledge that I made a mistake on the memo and the resolution. I was working off some old notes, I apologize, but the request is actually going to be for 162 feet height for the structure. I put 150 feet, so I guess if you're going to move forward, we'll have to do an amendment to that one as well, but.
If I may, for just, just one second, I'm sorry. I think it should be made clear that the 162 feet versus 154, or 150, excuse me, was included in the original application, there was a miscommunication based on a phone call. But it was presented to the, the plan commission with that in mind. They did just recommend adoption of the ordinance as it read, but I think they contemplated and they understood in the meeting that the actual request was for 162-foot height relaxation as opposed to the 150 that's, that's listed. So I wanted to kind of set the table with that. The petitioner is here to discuss certainly. The, the reason that this is before you, it is, already has a PDD overlay, a planned development district overlay. And one of the exceptions in the original planned development district overlay was a height relaxation to.
125?
To 125 feet. So now they're asking for an additional exceedance of approximately 37 feet. The ordinances do allow the zoning administrator some discretion in granting such a request. In Troy's opinion on this one, and I agree with him, I, I respect that he's bringing it before the boards and not willing to just make the, the change, but that was his option. He had some discretion to grant a de minimis change to the planned development district. However, due to these circumstances, due to the, the already granted height relaxation to the additional height relaxation, he thought it was most appropriate to bring it before the board and actually go through a subsequent zoning amendment. So that's why it's in front of you. I wanted to kind of make those two points clear, it's actually 162 feet. And this is, there's an argument here that it could have just been granted by Troy, but he decided to bring it forward to you, it just as kind of a responsible effort. So there you go.
Anything more for Troy?
I don't think I have anything else to add.
Okay, all right, and then I would like to ask the representatives from, I would like to recognize representatives from Lake Mills Feeding Grain, since you took the time to be here and waited all this time. Appreciate your being here, and please share the purpose of your project with us.
Well, you bet, can you folks hear me okay?
Yes.
John Tranberg, representing Lake Mills Feeding Grain, part of the Vita Plus Holding Company in Madison, address 2514 Fish Hatchery Road on the west side of Madison. As many of you are aware, Lake Mills Feeding Grain has been a part of the community for a number of years. And when we came before this council here a couple of years back, we had a, a pretty good plan on what we wanted to do. Well, as plans continued to evolve, so was our business and so was the community. So now we're sitting and saying, okay, what does the future look like? And making this type of investment in this facility enables the, the team, the business to continue to grow and to continue to serve not only the customers of the immediate area, but customers surrounding the state of Wisconsin. So the hiding, the height variance does in fact do that. Some may ask, well, why do you need 162 feet of elevator leg? We are trying to do what we deem as environmentally responsible. When we use gravity to our advantage in elevating ingredients to 162 some odd feet, we can then fill bins via gravity versus establishing a shorter leg with a mechanical conveyor that makes a little bit of noise and certainly draws energy from the surrounding power grid. It's quieter in a leg in that, in respect, and it's easier to maintain, and we think is a better solution for all involved. This entire project, like the one that was announced and completed in 2022, is all about the safety of our employee owners on site, the safety of the community, the noise, the condition of the mill, and the overall general appearance and functionality. And we believe that this project takes a strong step forward into our continued presence serving the surrounding communities. So I welcome any questions regarding this.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
162 feet, can you help us visualize that? So there, there are, there is an elevator that's at 125 feet now.
That's correct.
Correct, so it would be a little more than 40 feet. Do you happen to know like how that would compare, say, with one of our city water towers or?
Well, I do not at that point.
Something else in the area, anybody have an idea?
I think there is a diagram included.
Yep.
That kind of shows.
But so it would be roughly 40 through, 40, I'm not doing my math correctly tonight. About 40 feet taller?
Roughly 40 foot taller.
Than the current height?
Yes.
Ms. Curler, are you concerned of the potential of it being too high or causing?
Well, I'm just trying to, trying to help visualize it because I think that's, you know, it will be something that's visible on the landscape, and so I think people in the community will, will have an interest in that.
If my memory serves, I would say 85 or 90 feet on the water tower.
Okay.
That could be incorrect, but I believe it's 85 or 90 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I would like to comment and say thank you for considering the safety and the machinery, how that plays out for your employees as well as the community. I do have a question regarding the use of gravity and grain, knowing that when grain falls, dust lifts. Has there been any thought as to how to prevent that kind of environmental change?
The dust collection system will exist, in fact, we're making continued upgrades to that to address that exact issue.
Thank you.
If, if I could, just, when we talk about safety, back in 2022, one of our goals was to nearly eliminate the turnaround traffic across State Highway 89. We've done that with the project now through parking on the western side of the lot. Been a tremendous success. This project not only accomplishes the ability to move product in a more efficient manner via gravity, but it also really reduces truck and trailer idle time on site. From continuing to go back and park and pick up, there's noise, there's diesel emissions. We're just trying to make it a little bit easier and a little bit more environmentally friendly for our employees and for the community.
I appreciate you commenting on that, and I think it's particularly interesting. I remember when we were looking at, I think it was a CSM a couple of years ago, and a modified survey, and the lot has some constraints to it, certainly.
Yes, it does.
It's sort of long and narrow, so I, I applaud you for what you've been able to accomplish in managing the flow on that site, given, given some of those geographic constraints.
We did make a few acquisitions of land with the last project to ensure that we met the 30% green space requirement, and that space continues to remain undeveloped and, quite frankly, just maintained in, in pretty darn good condition.
Thanks. Greg, did you have questions or comments?
Yeah, he did, went and answered my questions already, but from the planning commission, I asked questions about noise and traffic, and he addressed those already tonight. But can you go into how you've used the green space to, to help with the environmental concerns around the, around the grain mill?
Well, it's a good question. Not only have we acquired land to the immediate south of the facility and access it in the initial parcel, but across the roadway as well, which remains undeveloped. And the entire parcel on the west side of the road not only had last year, excuse me, last project in 2022 asphalted, but a wastewater or a stormwater management plan, as well as filters put in place, and everything meets our expectations of doing what we say we did. As well as, we put up an arborvitae barrier to the north and to the south side of the property, as we committed to. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Tranberg, or Mr. Andler is here as well. I seem, seems you don't want to speak, but that's fine. You're welcome to. Okay, well, that is the first reading for this evening, so this would be carried forward to the next meeting for a second reading.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for being here. So we're down to recommendations for future agendas. Are there any recommendations or suggestions from council members?
Any staff?
I would like to, I guess, propose slash ask what the timeline is for our next, next conversation on Sandy Beach Park redevelopment. I think at our last meeting, Drake, you were talking about needing to pull together some financial information for us to consider.
I don't have a timeline for you yet on the next meeting. It's a high priority, multiple departments are working on different aspects of it. I don't want to give you a date.
Okay.
But it is at the top of our priority list to get another conversation on it, whether that's at a, at a meeting like this or at a work session.
Well, thank you, and I, I just want to acknowledge it, it, it really made an impression on me at our last meeting that you, you know, as the presentation that we had from our engineers, and that you really impressed upon us that there are some key decisions that we need to be making. And we're going to need a lot of data to help us do that, so I appreciate that, it'll take some time.
Yeah, if the council, I guess, if, if, if a member of the city council or multiple, or multiple members of the city council wish to discuss termination of leases for the 2026 lease year, you should get in contact with the chair and request a special meeting because that deadline is June 17th, which would be after our next one. That's not the recommendation of your staff. Our recommendation of the staff is not to issue termination of leases until before the deadline of the following year, but it is within your authority to issue those terminations yet this year.
Thank you for that, that's good to know. Any items that you want to call to our attention that'll be on future agendas?
Can somebody close that back door? Thank you.
We're just about done. Anything else? Okay, Mary?
Yes, I, I would like to learn more about post, since we have, post-bid safety alternatives for Milton Street. Because I'm, I would like to learn about, are there options and what, what other streets? Because I experience also the school pass periods, north and south ferry. I've had residents on north ferry, actually, with some concerns about parked cars and high school students maneuvering around parked cars, I've observed it myself. I've been also, kind of like some of the residents here, actually involved in having some, you know, scares, personal, you know, near misses, and so I just think safety during certain periods on the appropriate roads and what, what alternatives are that we could support, whether they're permanent or temporary, that are very cost effective, and I think Milton Street, given its situation. I think, I appreciate all of the residents who have taken the time to share their perspective and their concerns. I just think I, I would like to learn more about what we can think about as alternatives.
We'll put together some options for you.
And kind of similar to that, I, and I apologize if everyone here is familiar with it, and I'm not, just because I'm, I'm the new guy, but if the speed study from last year could be attached to next, next week's agenda, I'd appreciate that, being able to look at that.
I'll ask the police chief to attend for the conversation as well.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, that'd be great. Any other items here?
I guess one more thing I'll just make as an announcement, I probably should have said this earlier, but as Drake pointed out in his memo earlier, our updated procedures for running meetings and, and public comment will be in effect for the next meeting, so the agendas will look slightly different. And we'll have a slightly different sign-in form that Misty's working on and probably be asking people to sign in ahead of the meeting and then be called up. So just a heads up to people, probably will take a little time for us all to get used to new procedures, but just wanted to let people know that that'll be starting with our next meeting. So our next agenda item is to convene into closed session. This is described on the agenda to discuss real estate acquisition and/or site development opportunities within tid 8 of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851E. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So I need a motion to convene into closed session.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero, so we will be moving into closed session, and we'll be reconvening off of television, so this is the end of the broadcast for this evening. Thank you, everyone.